I'd like to call this Tuesday, March 20th, meeting in Middletown City Council to order. And if you're able, if you'd please stand and join me in a moment of meditation and pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Skank, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Vettori. Mr. Bohannon.
Here.
Mr. Moon.
Here.
Mr. Mulligan.
Here.
Mayor Mulligan.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to excuse the mayor and Councilwoman Vettori.
Still moved.
Second.
Ms. Skank, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
All right, this evening, I'd like to start by inviting Major Steve Aerosmith from Warren County down to give us a brief presentation. Good evening.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone, for allowing me a few minutes again this year. I'm here for two reasons. I'm here to distribute our annual report from the Warren County Drug Task Force. I was here last year, as you remember. This is my third year of coming around and doing this. And as I said last year, I just think it's important to get around and say thank you to those jurisdictions that we work with quite a bit, which we do a lot of work with your police department here. And we're very thankful for the relationship we have with them. And also thank you to this council for your support of law enforcement and what we're out here trying to do. So I hope that you'll take a few minutes to flip through the annual report. I was just saying back here that it is my best attempt to put together an annual report. I wish it was full of good news, but unfortunately, it is not. But that's some of the reality of what we're dealing with in our county, which I'm sure that's going to mirror a lot of what's going on over here as we tend to crisscross back and forth. So as in years past, I touch on the basic structure of the Warren County Drug Task Force, which I think people now realize we've been around for some time. But for those who don't know, I do start off our annual report with that. So for 2017, we maintained a staff of 21 from 11 different law enforcement agencies. Very appreciative of that, and that has continued on into 2018 for this year. Our primary mission is to target mid-to-upper level drug traffickers and drug trafficking offenses. In Warren County, we are the only full-time drug enforcement unit. So there are no other police jurisdictions that have a drug unit. So we're the only unit that operates over there. We continue to operate in all of our county and then in the city of Wilmington, over in Clinton County. So that has not changed either. I report to a policy board, which consists of Sheriff Sims, our prosecutor, and then most of our police chiefs in Warren County. So I have monthly meetings that I have to brief our board. They come to the task force office, and I put on a presentation just to update them on current investigations. And they have an opportunity to provide input and direction for me and the drug task force. So we are funded in a variety of ways. That has not changed either. We are a HIDA initiative, which stands for High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. We receive a small amount of funding from the HIDA program. Also, multiple grants. The JAG grant, which is a federal grant, the Justice Assistance Grant, Drug Law Enforcement Grant, which is a grant through Ohio. And then we also operate off of financial contributions from many of the jurisdictions within Warren County. We ask for a donation of $1 per person based upon the most recent census numbers. So that gives us some other operating income. Our county commissioners then make another contribution to us to keep us doing what we do. I'll touch on just a couple of quick things, and then I'll take any questions that you might have. Heroin and fentanyl remained a problem, obviously, throughout 2017. Did experience a pretty significant spike in crystal meth, amphetamine. Meth is a major problem now, and I'm sure you're seeing that over here as well. That's pretty consistent around Ohio. I'm in pretty regular contact with our coroner's office. And our overdose deaths now in 2018, if you compare today's date to last year, there's been a significant decrease in the actual overdose deaths related to heroin and fentanyl in our county. The numbers, as of last week, if you looked at this week in March in 2017, we had almost 30 overdoses. And last week, we were at nine in Warren County. So that's good. I'm not saying where heroin and fentanyl is gone. There's plenty of it out there. But meth, I think, will be our probably primary problem for us as a drug task force going into 2018. In the annual reports, you'll see we had 506 criminal cases, executed 171 search warrants, seized 71 firearms, made 180 felony arrests. I've had a few jurisdictions that have pointed out in there the decrease in our felony arrest numbers. And that's a direct result of us being switching crime labs. I think, I don't know if you use Miami Valley Crime Lab over here or not, but we sure missed them. I'm not knocking the Ohio Attorney General or BCI, but they have a lot of lab cases to analyze over there. So it's impacted the turnaround time for us, which has impacted our ability to get our cases in front of grand jury. So that's why that number is a little bit less. In Warren County, in 2017, we only had five meth labs, which that's decreased, continues to go down for us. So crystal meth and amphetamine is everywhere, and it's very cheap. So most people around us aren't even going through the trouble of making it themselves anymore because it's too easy and cheap to get on the streets. So I highlighted a few of our major cases in there. Hopefully, you have the time to read through that. Glad to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you again for the support we receive from over here to your police department here. We value that relationship that we have with them, and we do a lot of work with them throughout the years.
Any last questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next year if you'll let me come back.
Have a good day.
I've received two comment cards tonight. Like to invite Darrell Banks to come down. Just need your name and address for the record.
Darrell Banks, 5918 Hayden Drive, Middletown, Ohio. I just wanted to touch on last week, or two weeks ago, real quick, where I had brought up the entrance from the new Metro Park coming in from the bike trails. First thing I wanted to say was the cleanup over there is exceptional. Looks really good. Also, the smell, I figured out what it was. It's pulp. Yeah. At first, I thought it was the other P-word, but it's pulp. Still, some kind of neutralizer would be good because that is a bad odor there. Other than that, like I said, the litter plastic pollution's cleaned up. Looks really well. I did notice, though, on the one end of the Forest Hills, I think it is, the building, the far end going away, the building is not painted on that end. I'm sure they're waiting for a weather break to finish painting that building. Second, on the new agenda for me, I wanted to discuss some of the downtown security issues. First was the, um, an incident my wife had with my son. It's been a little while back, and it's been greatly improved since. So, but it's just something that kind of scares citizens from coming into the downtown. But like I said last month, or two weeks ago, I keep thinking monthly. But two weeks ago, I said how good of a job Chief Mootersfall was doing pushing the crime out of the downtown. The other one was at the candy shop, Pat Paul's Candy Shop. My wife and mother-in-law was approached by panhandlers coming out of that alley there. And the parking there is just a little rough yet, so some better parking. The third thing was not, oh, a month ago, we were at the blast furnace, and we had an incident where a person came up to my wife as if they were going to panhandle. And then they seen me and got a second decision of not to grab her purse. I believe they was going to grab her purse. But I followed that person. We kind of compromised our own identity and security. I mean, I went around the block, he walked off. I stayed on him, looked him right in the eye. We called the police. They had got other calls because he was looking at cars, and they apprehended him. So again, that's, you know, Middletown's finest is doing a great job. My idea on that was maybe get the businesses in the area to, at least up until closing time, to maybe go in and have a, maybe bicycle patrol or something, an officer down there on a bike a little more often, buzzing up and down that area. And I think that would help ease people's minds and get them to come into the downtown just a little more. I'll get with you offline with some emails, some ideas I have that are a little more in-depth.
Okay.
That way, Mr. Moon doesn't have to tell me my three minutes is good. And just a, you know, my thing is, we make Middletown attractive as far as the website that people go to. There are some pictures on the website that I wondered, on Middletown Historic or Middletown Downtown, Inc., whatever that website is. I looked at that website, and I was like, why would they have these pictures on there? I'll get with somebody that can maybe improve that. And I got some pictures of my own. Improving that website, the downtown, when you enter from the bike trails and once you're inside, would be good before people come. They want to come back. As they come in, most important is they come back and continue to spend money. I guess like a final thought that I have, a conclusion, would be just, I know we have a lot of new industries. I helped build the Gemma Power Plant. And somebody out there told me that they had had to pay their taxes to Middletown. And I don't think they really liked that because I think it was a pretty big amount. And then you got Sun Coke, which I also helped build, that I believe is coming off a tax abatement. So like I was telling you, some of the ideas, I know money's there. Yeah, I believe Mr. Atkins is a good money manager. So with that, I was just wondering if maybe before Memorial Day, there could be some kind of emergency funding, possibly, that would be able to be allotted to take care of just a few things that I will get with Mr. Atkins that would make the downtown look a lot better. Like I said, I'll give you the pictures, and then you can obviously decide. You're the man, so. And with that, that's all I have this week, or bi-week.
Well, thank you for coming down, and thanks for your concerns and comments.
All right. Thank you.
I'd like to invite Dr. Dor Bronson down to the podium. And as you know, name and address for the record.
Dor Bronston, 4817 Earl Avenue. That sounds so loud. Vice Mayor Moon and council. I had two things. One is an announcement tonight for our scholarship banquet. I'm sure you're aware of it. It's going to be held April 26 at Central Connections at 5:30 PM. And we will be honoring Roger Connor, Flowers by Roger. Also Bev Howard, who's been a volunteer full-time at Rosa Parks. And also Charlene Hackney, Big Hackney family. And they do a lot of work behind the scenes. So those will be the three people that will be honored this year. My second item is kind of a different kind of a question, I guess. Under the consent agenda, I would like for perhaps Councilman Mulligan to either extract Part B, or if Mr. Atkins can talk about what's going on at the Visitors Bureau. A lot of resignations there. I know we did a revamp last year, and just kind of wanted to find out what's going on. It was not in the workbook. So I just wanted a little bit of a conversation about it. I've had a few people calling me, and I don't have the answer. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And we can move to our city manager reports.
I can give you half of Dor's answer. Obviously, Joe and Amy resigned as they came on to council. It was always designed, as we put this together, we put together a large group of people that we wanted to revamp the Convention Visitors Bureau. And the idea is, once that started getting into some final form, which it isn't all the way, but it's close enough now, we know where we're headed, that a lot of those people were intended to drop off and get down to a board of, I believe, it's seven. I haven't seen the last update from them. But last I'd heard, it was going to be seven members that were going to be permanent. But it was always designed that this larger group of people would help with the revamping of the policies and procedures and budgets and all that. And then it would go down to that smaller group. And again, I know that a lot of these were people who were resigning at the end of that beginning process. And I honestly don't know the status of who's coming on and where that stands, at least as we sit here tonight. The other thing I've got, if you could move me forward. I've got a request from Allen Cliff Industries, who's a home builder in Middletown. He's doing a lot of homes down on Jackson Lane, if you've been down that area. If you look on the screen at the gray parcel on the top right-hand corner there, and right that little thumb that goes off at the end to the left. You see what I'm talking about? That little sliver that goes off to the left towards the Allen Cliff Industries parcel? That's, all of this is all, all of the gray is ours, and it's all one parcel right now. What the gentleman would like to do is he wanted to know if council would be interested, if he got it rezoned at his expense, and if he got the parcel split at his expense, had the surveys done, paid for the recording, did all the legal work that needed to be done, would council be interested in deeding that sliver over to him? And he said he could add two more houses to that little subdivision if we were willing to do that. And I said I would bring that, at least, you know, before he spent money on zoning, before he spent money on surveys, that I would at least bring it to council's attention and see if there was at least an interest in looking at that. My guess is he's going to be out a couple thousand dollars by the time he surveys and records and does his part. It's a sliver that's, you know, there's no access to it. I don't have a problem. I think it's probably a nice little use of that area that might be a productive use that we wouldn't have otherwise. But I wanted to see if council, before I sent him down the path of spending any money, wanted to see if council had any comments or concerns about doing that.
Would the access be off, is it Jonathan Way there?
Yeah, he would be off his property now. He would, yeah, build a road in there and-
He's not going to be cutting through from the side here.
Correct, correct. It will not come through ours. So, yeah, the question is, where the pen mark goes down there and that sliver off to the left, if he performs the lot split, the survey, and gets it rezoned to residential, would the city be willing to donate that to him for the expenses paid that he's paid in getting all those changes made? Is there any, Joe, any concerns, any?
How does this fit in with our updates to zoning and planning? Because if this is zone industrial-
It's going to be close.
Oh, we wanted to avoid that.
Yeah, we haven't gotten far enough in our housing policy. But one of the things we did talk about is creating a buffer between residential, and that's I-1 heavy industrial use. Right now, there's a lot of open land there. I don't know how likely it is to be developed, but that is, you're, that is correct.
So that's my concern.
Well, you've got the two other little cul-de-sacs there that are backing up to it, too, so.
Might be wise to wait till we have a full council.
We bring it back to you on April 3rd and let the other two weigh in? Happy to do that.
That's probably what I would say.
That's what we'll do. Thank you. I appreciate that, and that's all I have to know.
Then we can move to our consent agenda, Ms. Skank.
For your consideration this evening, we have the approval of the city council minutes from February 20th, 2018, to inform the board and commission resignations of Dustin Hurley, Joe Mulligan, Amy Vettori, John Langhorn, and Craig Baldwin from the Middletown Visitors Bureau, to confirm the personnel appointment of Ben Weaver, maintenance worker, public works and utilities, to authorize a purchase of three sedans off the Ohio Department of Administrative Services, ODAS, cooperative purchasing contract for Middletown Ford Incorporated in the amount of $54,858, to authorize a purchase of a Ford Explorer for detectives off the Ohio Department of Administrative Services, ODAS, cooperative purchasing contract from Lebanon Ford Incorporated in the amount of $27,599, and to confirm the board and commission appointments of Kathleen Batliner to the Civil Service Commission and Timothy Blayshock to the Building and Housing Board of Appeals.
Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda before us?
Still moved.
Second.
Ms. Skank, I just have a quick question. I'm sorry, on mine, I don't have the second.
Tim Blayshock-
I pressed out a new one.
Okay.
And Tim Blayshock has served on that board in the past. Whenever you guys considered him before, we were just waiting on an application. And he did turn that in.
All right. Thank you very much. Please go ahead and call the roll.
All right. Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
And for your motion agenda, I'm item tonight to authorize the sale of a city-owned vacant lot at 621 weight to the adjacent property owner, Jonathan Harold, for $500.
Your Honor, we had previously demolished a house at 621 weight. Mr. Harold owns a property adjacent at 18, 19 grand on the corner, and he wishes to purchase this lot to extend his yard. We would normally sell that for $500. The staff is recommending approval.
Any questions?
I own the house right next door to that lot, so I'm going to be very much making sure he keeps it cut. Works for me. There you go.
Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Ms. Skank, would you call the roll?
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
All right, we'll move to our council comments. Mr. Mulligan?
No comments tonight, Mr. Moon. Thank you.
No comments tonight, sir.
All right, I just had one item I wanted to mention. Last Saturday, the mayor and I had an opportunity to attend a community baby shower at the, at the community center downtown. Just wanted to thank Molina Healthcare, Atrium, Ruth Kelly, and everybody that was involved. My nearly two-year-old just thought it was the greatest thing because there was a little tiger dressed up, and he's just learned to say tiger. So beyond all the wonderful stuff they did, it was a wonderful event. So thanks to everyone. Ms. Cohen, we can move to our legislation.
Great, thank you. We have five items to consider this evening. We move right to the first one, Resolution R. 2018-06, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Middletown, counties of Butler and Warren, state of Ohio, for the period ending December 31st, 2018, in the general fund. I believe this is a second reading.
Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
I believe we've had a previous discussion on this, Mr. Atkins. Any updates or changes?
No, just a reminder that this is the Community Foundation Grant for additional training in police. And this is appropriating the money so that it can be spent for that purpose.
Ms. Skank, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
The next matter is Ordinance O. 2018-07, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a contract with Howell Contractors Incorporated for the repair of the East Middletown Interceptor Sewer and declaring an emergency. However, no action is requested until April the 3rd.
Your Honor, back in January, we had a section of the East Middletown Interceptor Sewer partially collapse. It was a 42-inch diameter corrugated metal pipe that had been installed in 1967 to avoid EPA violations. We did an emergency repair with the Howell Contractors. They have done other repairs like that in the past. The repair was done on a time and materials basis. The funds are appropriated. We will just need to approve this at the next meeting.
Any questions?
Okay, that should take us to number three, which is Ordinance O. 2018-08, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a contract with OBR Cooling Towers Incorporated for the repair of cooling towers at the city building and declaring an emergency. However, no action is requested until April the 3rd.
Your Honor, we have problems with both of our cooling towers on the roof of the city building. We've done some rebuilding of the compressors, but the other pieces are now starting to fail, their older units. To repair them so we don't lose air conditioning as it starts to get in to the warmer weather, we will need to appropriate $42,000 to the building maintenance account. There's a quote for that work attached for your review in that we are asking for a second reading emergency on April 3rd so we can make sure the repairs are completed before the warm weather gets here.
Do you really need air conditioning here?
Depends on the day. Not tonight.
Any other questions?
Okay. The next matter will be Ordinance O. 2018-09, an ordinance setting forth municipal services that will be provided to 3.089 plus or minus acres located in Franklin Township, Warren County, Ohio, as required by Section 709.023 of the Ohio Revised Code, and declaring an emergency. No action requested until April the 3rd.
Your Honors, we had talked earlier. I'd sent out some information to council. We've received an annexation request for, I believe, it's two or three parcels along South Dixie Highway from Franklin Township into the city of Middletown. I had also sent you along some correspondence we'd had with both, I think, Warren County and certainly Franklin Township and their view on that. It's ready to go for us now. One of the first steps under the Ohio Revised Code is a statement of services to be provided. It's a standard statement. It has to be done as part of the annexation process. So we will be asking you to pass that at the April 3rd. It's just saying we'll provide water, sewer, fire, and normal services to that new area.
Do we already have water and sewer out there, I assume?
We do.
And do we know-
It is adjacent to, yeah, contiguous to-
And we already provide police and fire to that portion, okay?
Technically, yes.
Okay.
We go right by it, yes.
All right. Very good. Any questions?
Okay, the last matter will be Resolution R. 2018-07, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Middletown, counties of Butler and Warren, state of Ohio, for the period ending December 31st, 2018. This is the general fund, and it's first reading this evening.
Your Honor, we have been running the heroin summit for about three years now. And as part of that process, council was nice to give us some money to work on some of the various programs that we've done. One of the areas that we had worked on was through the University of Cincinnati Foundation. We had been putting a purchase order together from funds from last year to pay part of the syringe exchange program that we have going on. That program has now been changed-
That program has now been changed to another entity, which means the PO can no longer be used. We are going to release that PO, and we would like to just re-appropriate the exact same amount. Will not be additional use of funds. It'll be simply letting the PO go and re-appropriating the funds to the new vendor to allow that to happen. We'll ask for a non-emergency passage at the next meeting for that.
All right, there's nothing else? We'll be in recess till our next meeting on Tuesday, April 3rd.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Good job.